Hello. The one on live stream. Check, check. Testing. Check one, two. Check, check. Check, check. Check, check. Hello. Hello.
Said. Are we missing anybody? We got Lisa, Natalie's here, Kathy Jo. Okay, all right, guys, we're gonna get started with the pledge, please. Okay, we're gonna start the meeting for a moment of silence for a longtime employee, John Young, who passed away recently. Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna go to the approval of the minutes for the Tuesday, October 18th meeting. If it is, if there's no discussion, unanimous consent, if anybody has any discussion, please let us know. Okay, we're gonna move on to committee reports. Finance and operations.
We have nothing to report today.
Thank you. Personnel and policy.
We reviewed a number of policies tonight. There are several on the agenda that are second reads. Those were all looking good, no changes there. We also reviewed two first read policies tonight. One was a Title I comparability of services. Where we just had to select who the delegation of responsibility goes to, and it'll be the federal programs coordinator, which is Mr. Mosher at the moment. So we will bring these, we'll give the changes to Christine and move these to second read. We also reviewed a policy first read on trauma-informed approach. Which is just the approach that we take as a district to supporting individual student achievement when a trauma has occurred. There was a number of items that we selected, you know, just that match our current programs and support that we offer. So we'll get this policy updated, send a fresh copy out for second read. Very straightforward and in line with the programs we currently offer. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Curriculum instruction and technology, Mr. Toscano.
Good evening, just a couple informational items. We are continuing to work with Keystone College to enhance as many dual enrollment classes and opportunities for high school students. And one of the classes we actually teach already, our AP computer science class. We are in the process of getting that approved by Keystone to offer that as dual enrollment as well. And the only thing we're waiting on now is just they need to approve the teacher who teaches it for us, Mrs. DeForest. Her credentials should be just a formality, but that'll be another opportunity for our kids. Updated the committee on the Ekkery study due to a number of different issues. With this, with the study and some other issues. Mrs. Rhodes and I met with the leader of the study last week and did express our desire to leave. That study, we will continue on with the Accra instruction in first grade. However, we will not be part of that study moving forward. Preliminary future ready index data came out yesterday. And Mr. Stage and I in reviewing that noticed some errors. So I've reached out to them to go through the process of correcting that. And once we have our corrected data, I will share that with the committee and the board. Didn't want to share any, any information at this point because it's not correct in our opinions. Lastly. Mr. Cummings discussed with the committee a curriculum that we'd like to purchase for our life skills and autism support classrooms. Lynch SRU middle and high school. Currently, there is no set curriculum for those classes. So the teachers are kind of having to piecemeal things together on their own. The IU is recommending a curriculum that a number of districts in our area are also in the process of adopting. Mr. Cummings shared that with the group. It's actually on the agenda tonight for you all to approve. If you would, a five-year agreement is what we're asking for. And this is gonna greatly enhance the. Instruction and the learning process for those students in those classrooms in the four buildings in the district.
What was the cost, Mr. Toscano?
The five-year cost was $133,000, was $53,000 for the first year. And then $20,000 renewal for the next four years. That would be for all of the students in the district that are considered intellectually disabled, or if it's a student with autism. It will cover all those students K to 12. Correct. It'll make transitions from between SRU and Lynch easier. It'll make the transitions from the elementary to the middle and the middle of the high school easier. It'll help those teachers with their progress monitoring for the students' goals and just really enhance the education for those students.
And that would come out of this year's budget?
That would come out of the curriculum budget for this year, correct. Somebody's bailing out Mr. Cummings with, with the, correct, that would be the highest amount. There's some wiggle room there depending on what we wanna. What we want to do in terms of exactly what we'll purchase. But that should be the, the, the highest amount. And the other thing we're working on right now is, is they might be offering a consortium price to our IU. However, Eric in working with them, they're telling him that that price will probably be the price that they've quoted us now. However, we want to get in writing from them if that price is lower. The consortium price is lower come January 1 that they would honor that for us as well. Even if we agreed to the current terms that they've quoted us at. So he will be securing that in the near future.
Like John said, it is on tonight's agenda. So if you have any questions. It's time to ask. Thank you, John.
Awesome, thank you.
Extracurricular activities, Mr. Rude.
We, we had a meeting where Mr. Clark gave a presentation on forming an esports team. He went through all the benefits of, you know, all the participants would be held to the same grading standards as the other extracurricular activities. The cost of it is all covered by the Esser money. And we would like to recommend that it be put on the agenda. To formally adopt an esports team at the, our next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Like, I don't know much about esports, that look like it wins the season.
Well, I don't think there, from what I gathered, there isn't. I mean, Clint jumped right there. There, there isn't a season. I mean, there's different events that they can compete in. I mean, colleges are even given scholarships for the esports.
Similar, and they'll compete with other school districts and they, they work as a team. It's kind of like a team building. It's like any other sport where they're, they're building a team, they work together, they practice together, and they compete against other schools.
One other important thing I think a lot of people want to know are like, what kind of, what kind of games are they playing? And it's not the games that they probably look most violent. So you're thinking of, you know, games where there's weapons being used.
Maybe like strategy games.
Strategy games. There's other.
Rocket League is one of the biggest ones that they play. Yeah. 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 It's, it's one of the free games that's out there and most schools use that to compete.
I, I, I mean, without this, when would we be able to start? Like when, and, and like, I don't know if there's a cycle that they have to be, you know, on the year.
Well, I know, Mr. Clark told us that he's already gauged interest and there is a lot of interest. And we could pretty much start it immediately once we approve it.
Yeah, we could start immediately and then immediately do scrimmages with other school districts. As far as any formal competitions, we'd have to organize those, but just doing like regular scrimmages and stuff with local districts. There's a couple in the area that have teams and there's even some colleges in the area that have teams that we could do scrimmages against.
B and A. Like a region, like is that how it's set up or is it we just?
Not necessarily.
Anyone who has.
Because the, because of the, the playing field is digital, right? We could compete across the world. So we technically could be playing people, other teams on the school, a very wide field. So there are some different versions of leagues that are regionalized, but I don't think what we're trying to do is that. We're trying to really grow, might even be a cultural experience for the kids, but it's very competitive. Esports is a real thing. I know people are kind of like, well, just setting us up a TV playing game. No, it's, it's valid since Mr. Root said, it's a very profitable professional career to it. For some people who are very good at it, just like professional sports athletes. Not that we think every kid's gonna be a pro, but it's also for, for, for me, it's a reason for kids to keep interested in schools. There's an eligibility requirement, which I am very thankful for. And, you know, the same expectations of any student athlete or any student that participates in extracurriculars. That's still going to be required. For me, I'm all for it. If it gets them to get out of the box, something's going to get another reason and another reason.
Is there a limit on the number of students that would be able to be on a team?
Currently, we, we have five seats. Five, five machines, but that doesn't mean only five can participate. There are going to be other types of competitions. So much like Simon Kumpfjag, where they had numerous kids on the team.
And five compete.
So I, I don't know how big the team will be, but I can imagine it could get larger.
And we have five systems that are in the building where we also have the potential for having kids joining in from home. So we could have a larger team if some of them were joining in from home and competing that way.
And I just, I just love the fact that we're trying to open up our minds to creating new areas for kids to develop their interest. And we did girls wrestling, was it last year? And look how successful that's become. And we're really like, I, I'm grateful that the board takes the time to investigate these types of opportunities for kids. So I think this is a good one for us.
Christine.
What about on the next?
Do you need to approve a coach and scout and like do it for other activities?
Well, we'll have all that in December.
Okay.
There's some people already in mind, I think Mr. Clark, Mr. Nichols have already been doing anything. I do want to thank Mr. Clark and Mr. Nichols. They've done a heck of a lot of work getting all the information, organizing everything. They've done a great job, so I appreciate that.
Anything else? Is that, is that all, Mr. Rude?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Awesome. All right, so we are going to hold a brief, hopefully brief executive session for legal and personnel. And we will return.
Okay, we are now into reports, Mr. Stage Superintendent report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair Znowski. I'd like to take some time. Um, one thing that a board member brought up to me, it'd be really good if we could talk about the schools in your reports or something a little bit more often. I said, that's a great idea. So I want to share a couple of things that are going on in our schools that I think are noteworthy or newsworthy. Um, out at SRU, um, there is the superhero award. Um, it is awarded to any K to 12 student showing the most growth in their RTI. Uh, those kids get called down, they get to wear a cape for the day, they get to be a superhero. It's, kids are loving it. Uh, at Lynch on last Tuesday, or this Tuesday, election day, they actually had an actual election. They had polling to places, the kids were broken into their region, so they had to go to the right voting area. And the voting was to decide who was the, the mayor of Lynch and it was Mrs. Rhodes or Whiskers. Whiskers is the cat. The, the wildcat mascot, um, Whiskers won in a landslide. I think, I think it was like by a couple hundred votes, so that was pretty fun. Uh, I'd like to point out Mrs. Greer, uh, Mrs. Greer is a fifth grade teacher at Lynch. Um, she is starting an Odyssey of the Mine team and they're gonna start getting at it in, in February is when they really start, uh, their, uh, organized events, so. Lynch and SRU partnered together, they're bringing in a steam machine to do some assemblies. And that'll be a really fun experience for the kids. Uh, one thing I do want to point out that is, uh, something that's pretty remarkable. Uh, a Lynch student, uh, lost their home and the, the family of Lynch students lost their home last night in a fire. Uh, it's incredible to see the support of all the faculty and staff, you know, providing the things for their student family to need. So that's just indicative of what our employees do. When they see someone in need and I was really, I wanted to point that out.
If you ever do fundraisers or something like that, can you share that with the board?
Absolutely, absolutely, I will. Uh, at the middle school, they have started a positive referrals and it's for catching kids doing the right thing. And so they're, uh, recognizing kids, they're putting that out on social media, recognizing kids that do the right thing in a, in a tough situation. So that's really going really well there. At the high school, I, I really want to point out Mr. Lickney's business class. I think this is really nice idea, it's really fun. Uh, the World Cup is happening and I think it starts next week, so they're taking all the teams that are competing in the World Cup. And they're creating, uh, monopoly style game, uh, based upon the GNP of those countries and, uh, the squares. Uh, will be given out based upon the GNP of the countries that are participating in the World Cup. So I thought that was a really neat project. Uh, and it gets, uh, the kids really involved in the World Cup, but it's also really great for them to understand, uh, you know, business and, and world economics. So. I wanted to report that out, so that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stage. All right, last IU, we do not have a rep for that. Uh, NTCC, Mr. Owen is not here. PSBA, Mr. Jones.
Cindy, I don't know if you wanna add anything since you went down to the meeting, but I don't, I don't, sorry to put you on the spot, I don't.
Drew me on the bus there, but, um, no, I did go down to the school board convention and they, they had, they had some very positive things to say. What, a couple of things that were very prevalent was a lot of legal matters and legal matters that schools are invested in. And one thing was having for extracurricular, this was something that really stood by me, but extracurricular, whether it's sports or anything else, a universal code of conduct, which is kind of what we had talked about a little earlier with even having the esports. And that struck me and they also, um, right now across the state, there's a, a lot of schools dealing with disruptive and unruly board meetings. And I think we're pretty blessed that ours have stayed generally benign, but it, it was, it was big. Um. Craig, did you, Craig, our superintendent sat on a board for positive and good communication skills and that was also done very well.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, it was, uh, interesting, interesting conference, really focused on school safety and mental health. That definitely was two strong themes. Um, and it was interesting to hear other people's perspective on that, but, yep.
Thanks.
All right, um, Mr. Barrett, Slisters report.
I have three items that I have to talk about tonight. One is our eminent domain case in Smithfield Township. At the present time, the, uh, district now owns the property. The, uh, only issue is compensation to be paid. And it appears that the amount of money we appraised it for will handle anyone who, uh, filed to be paid. In other words, we have excess money. We are trying to straighten those numbers out. Uh, I have a law firm in Philadelphia which hasn't given me the exact number yet. Otherwise, I'll have to schedule it for a pre-trial with a judge based on his last order. But even those people in their objection to the condemnation did not challenge the fact that we had taken the property or had reason to do it, they just challenged the value. And they did that out of prudence because they didn't really know what their mortgage was at the time. Secondly, pursuant to the school code, the board is required to do a performance evaluation of the superintendent annually. The board has completed that evaluation and based on the code, I am to announce publicly what the, uh, evaluation was, is to be placed in the minutes and placed on the district website. The evaluation of the superintendent for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three evaluation was distinguished, which is one of the highest, uh, highest rating as possible. Congratulations, Mr. Stage, appreciate it. The last item I have to talk about is like our board member and superintendent, the board was nice enough to send me from one day down to the, uh, state convention in the Poconos. And I, uh, attended the school, uh, workshop on Monday. And it was quite informative, we had a, a session on Title IX, a special, a session on special ed. A fairly in, in, involved session on the Right to Know Act, which is extremely, uh, broadening at times. We had, uh, an employment law update and then we had a general uh, review of, uh, as Cindy said, school laws, uh, and school cases that are coming down. Most of the speakers were pretty good and we, uh, I thoroughly enjoyed it and I thank you for uh, allowing me to go. I have some materials that I'll share with members of the administration throughout the year, uh, particularly on the right to know. Um, there were some forms that were pretty good. Thank you again, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Okay, we're up to visitor comments for board action items only. Please give your name, the borough or township and organization which you represent and the subject matter. It is requested that comments be kept to three minutes. Comments relative to private student or employee matters should be directed to the superintendent outside of the meeting. Are there any visitor comments on board action items only? Okay, huge crowd here tonight, guys. Um, we'll move on to financial business. Do I have a motion in a second to bring this to the table?
So moved.
Second.
So our financial business has all the normal that we have on here, the general funds, cafeteria bills, listing of bills, tax reports, middle school, high school, um, student account activity reports. Any discussion on these items? Hey Christine, when you're ready. Press and hold it.
You can use my calls.
Well, my, oh, there it is.
I got it. Okay. Uh, Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rude?
Yes.
This is smart.
Yes.
Mr. Chair Znowski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Okay, personnel is up next. Do I have a motion in a second to bring personnel up to vote?
So moved.
Okay, personnel, we have an updated personnel list of some resignations. Um, some non-bargaining contracts, support contracts, supplemental contracts and volunteers for athletics. We have a couple MOUs. And a request to reorganize, reorganize cafeteria hours memo. Any discussion on these items? Okay, Christine, when you're ready.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rude?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Chair Znowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
And Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Okay, up next, we have policies. Do I have a motion in a second to bring these to the table? Okay, these are all the policies that Mrs. Smart was already talking about a little bit. Most of them are second read, except for the last two are first reads. Any discussion? Okay, Christine.
Mr. Rude?
Yes.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Chair Znowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Up next is curriculum instruction. Do I have a motion in a second to bring this to the table?
So moved.
Second.
The, this is the Teach Town Curriculum Request that Mr. Toscano was talking about and the History Club two thousand twenty-four trip request. Is there any discussion on these items? Okay, Christine.
Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Mr. Chair Znowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Rude?
Yes.
Okay, up next is transportation. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
This is in addition of to the Boston driver list, van driver list. Any discussion? Okay, Christine.
Mr. Chair Znowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Frisby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Rude?
Yes.
And Mrs. Smart?
Yes.
Okay, there is no building and grounds. Next up is visitor comments. Please give your name, the borough or township and organization which you represent. Subject matters, request the comments be kept to three minutes. Comments relative to private student or employee matters should be directed to superintendent outside of this meeting. Any visitor comments? Okay, up next is board communications. You have personnel transfers, some field trip requests. Enrollment. I believe up to November first. And then you have for the school year. Are there any board discussion items at this time? Okay, our next meeting is our re, board reorganization meeting on Tuesday, December sixth. It's at the Athens Area School District Administration Office at seven. There is no need for an executive session. Do I have a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Everybody be safe driving home tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.